Good morning, and welcome to the December 8th meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Before we begin the meeting, I'm going to take a moment or two to reflect upon the terrible tragedy that occurred in San Bernardino County, and read the names of those people who died, and then ask for a moment of silence. So Nicholas Thalassinos, Aurora Godet, Yvette Velasco, Benedetta Bedabadall, Sierra Claiborne, Robert Adams, Larry Daniel Kaufman, Michael Raymond Wetzel, Damian Maines, Shannon Johnson, Tim Nugent, Isaac Aminios, Harry Bowman, and Juan Espinoza. Will you please join us in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Now we will, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause). (Crosstalk).
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
President Groom.
Present. Time for public comment. Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Groom, members of the board, my fellow veteran supervisor Slocum, and Mr. Malpey, and county councilman, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. I hope you have had a good Thanksgiving holiday, and are preparing for the momentous developments scheduled to take place in the new year. Thank you for your support of the implementation of Lower's Law in the new year. The gun violence restraining order legislation passed by the prior session of the legislature, AB 1014, is also effective January 1st. The new historical course of a person's mental illness detention criteria legislation that was passed during the recent special session of the legislature and signed by the governor on October 7th, AB 1194, becomes no later, becomes effective no later than the county's crisis collaboration meeting in Redwood Shores on Thursday, January 7th. Behavioral Health and Recovery Services recently hired a new crisis collaboration complex case conference coordinator to host the meeting, and we appreciate it if you would encourage her to place a discussion about Lower's Law, AB 1014 and AB 1194, on the crisis prevention work group agenda for that meeting. Since your last meeting, the Alameda County Board of Supervisors voted to implement Lower's Law, and the San Luis Obispo County Board of Supervisors directed their staff to present a plan to implement Lower's Law. More than half of the population of California has now had their county supervisors approve of Lower's Law. Now is the time to make sure that San Mateo County's mental health professionals, first responders, and family members of persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily know that they will have access to effective mental health treatment, and that the dangerousness to self or others test for involuntary treatment has been thrown on the ash heap of history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. John Romero.
Thank you, folks. I'll make it quick. The reason I'm here, I read in an article that was a local paper, and everything that's on here hit the mark. I've been homeless since 2006. I used to work for TSA for three years, making a salary of $80,000. I used to reside up here at the corner of Bradford, Maine. At that time, the apartment rental was $900 bucks. Now it's almost $2,500. I've experienced, I've been homeless in three states, and I just wanted to, I appreciate the time here, I just want to let people know that during this time, I've been on Maple Street five times, Safe Harbor five times, the VA once. Before my SSI came through, I also was up at a hotel that the county paid for up in South San Francisco. And the frustration that I feel, and this is personal experience, is that most of the vouchers go to single moms with children, which I think are the first that should get it. However, I've been on the hot list almost two years for the Vendome in San Mateo, California, and I've not been able to get in. I currently sleep outside. I'm an SSI. I was lucky enough to find a part-time job until the end of December, but it's very frustrating. I know that there's a lot of issues involved, and I don't have much time here, but I just want to state to the people here that everybody that's on the street, A, is not a drug user or alcoholic, and also, you know, it's very frustrating. I am a filmmaker, and through my experience, I plan to, by the grace of God when the time comes, I'm going to do a 15-minute documentary of what it's like. On the way over here, I met a homeless lady on the corner of Whipple and Al Camino, and took her picture. So I just wanted to let the board, the supervisors, and the people here know that when you see homeless people, they're all, don't have mental issues. I, however, because of my frustration, was detained twice for 72 hours, making comments when I was, at the time, at Maple Street. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Romero, thank you. Mr. Malpey, do you think we can get Mr. Romero in touch with Human Services, see what he can do? Robert Harker?
Harker.
Thank you. Thank you. Harker.
Harker.
Okay.
I was here a month ago, asking for election data to be posted on the open data portal, and nothing happened. I actually scraped the data off the county's website and posted it on the open data portal, so there were timely results. Since then, this official statement of the vote has come out. It is both a PDF file and a CSV or an Excel spreadsheet file, and my request is to have the spreadsheet file emailed to John Riedner, who is the open data coordinator, so that we can post it on the county's website. I can think of no other data that is more important or more public than election results. It is basically the thing that underlies our government, the government for the people by the people. In addition to that, it would be really interesting if we actually got all 40, 30, 40 years of election results that are available. The county's election system has been using the same computing infrastructure for a long time, so we'd have this data available. If we could put up 40 years' worth of detailed per precinct, per candidate, per measure data, it would be a very interesting resource for our community. Think of what high school students could do if they were looking at this. I'm looking at political history, and I could look at data and see how voting patterns changed over the last 40 years. Students who are looking at data modeling, I mean, in a program, they could write a little, a little app to display that data. It's a really interesting data set. So appreciate any help you could give for getting that data up there. It might, I mean, it's really sad, it might come down to the fact that I'm going to have to pay $125 to buy the table from the Elections Department, so I can put it on the county's open data website. And that's really a sad state of affairs. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Harker, thank you. We sent your letter from your last time here to our chief election officer, and I will do that again.
Thank you.
Kate Comfort-Har.
Good morning. I am Kate Comfort-Har, Executive Director of Hip Housing. I'm back, so that must mean it's that time of year again, which it is. So I'm here today with Ally Sobcek, our new community outreach specialist. And for those of you who don't know who Hip Housing is, we are an affordable housing provider here in San Mateo County specializing in really creative affordable housing solutions. We proudly provide housing options to about 1,400 low-income San Mateo County residents each year. Ally and I are here this morning for two reasons. First is to say a very heartfelt thank you to each of you for all the support that you've given to us for our housing programs, and also to the county overall for the support that we get for our housing programs. As you know, housing is hard. It is a battlefield out there, but because of your support, we are able to house far more people, so thank you for that. The second reason we're here, Ally and I, is to present the 2016 Hip Housing calendar. This is our 15th annual calendar. So each year, we ask students to draw pictures and tell us what home means to them, and we create this calendar. This year's calendar focus features one of my favorite quotes ever. In March, Christina, a fourth grader from Burlingame, wrote, "Home means great shelter and protection. It provides me with everything I need, if only everyone had a home." A home for everyone is Hip Housing's goal to, and to that end, there's something new in our 2016 calendar. The very last page is no longer a chronology of our, of our history, but rather is dedicated to recruiting new home providers. In San Mateo County, home sharing is one of the only available housing options for low-income people that never has a waitlist that closes. But for every one person that has a home to share, we have 10 people waiting for a place to live. So we hope you'll help us spread the word about the home sharing program. It's, it's a very unique program, and it is offered for free. And if we can get more providers, then we can house that many more people. One other thing is, you'll see that in your calendar is a copy of the invitation that was mailed to you for our party Wednesday night to celebrate the calendar where you can meet all of the contest winners. So thank you again. Hope we can see you on, on Wednesday.
And thank you for the work that Hip Housing does.
Yes, thank you very much.
So now is the time to set the agenda and approve consent agenda items. We are going to remove number five, and it will reappear on December 15th.
I'd like to, I've got a couple of questions about 19.
Vouchator service.
Okay.
I had a question just on a group of, under the health system, numbers 20 to 26. I just really have a question. I don't know that we need to pull it necessarily.
Okay. Well, let's, anybody else? So let's answer Supervisor Pine's question first on 19.
All right, I guess I have a couple of questions. Is Mr. Cole here?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Cole. So this, this issue of, you know, trying to get our voucher holders places to live is, you know, a big one, and I know it's a concern to all of us. Could you give us a little more data on how many of these vouchers are unused currently?
The housing authority of the county of San Mateo is experiencing, in our lease-up measurements, we're about 9% to 10% below where we should be. So we have the pool of funds, we have the number of vouchers, and we're trying to, to lease up to a certain dollar amount. It's not so much the voucher count as it is the subsidy. And so we're about 10% below. And in the California Association of Housing Authorities, I speak with other housing authorities throughout the state, and in all the high-rent markets, they're all slipping.
Sure.
Against the market.
You're telling me I kind of quantify that, that 10%, I kind of can't get my eyes around. I mean, are there hundreds of people that, or 1,000 people that, you know, that we, that could have housing if the market hadn't gone crazy?
It's in the hundreds. It's not in the thousands, but it's in, certainly in the hundreds. So you have the normal voucher turnover rate. You have some people who have a landlord cooperating, and it's just a matter of, of getting the paperwork done and getting, getting the lease-up done. You've got other people who have, basically been holding a voucher for, for a long period of time, and will do extensions as, as much as we can to extend their search time. But this new contract with Abode, I think, will really power up our ability to...
And that's what this contract is focused on, right? Is helping these individuals?
It's focused on outreach, engaging new landlords, creative approaches like master leasing, anything that can be done to, to, in some cases, you're needing to handwalk the person through the process to make the match. In other cases, you, you have to get new landlords into the pool, and, and sometimes you'll have owners who'll be willing to do master leases versus deal with people on an individual basis. So it's anything and everything. No stone unturned.
Can you use any of these funds to incent these landlords, or is this solely for services?
Fortunately, with the moving-to-work funds, we are able to use incentive approaches.
And finally, you know, I mentioned on a couple occasions, the idea that, you know, would it make sense for us to work with one of, with, work with our, our local delegation to see if some legislation could be introduced to prevent, or at least mitigate or minimize discrimination against people with vouchers, and is, is that something you would advise?
Yes. And in fact, I think there's several legislators interested in reintroducing, there had been prior efforts to get bills up and running along that line. The state of Oregon's been the most successful in getting the discriminatory fund source out of the picture, and they've also incentivized landlords to, to participate.
It's okay, my, I call it, I like to push on it.
Yeah. Yes.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Adrian?
Just a quick question for Louise. I saw it earlier, I've been yesterday, last night, I would have called you. On those items, number 20 through 26, do any of these providers provide services in the North County?
Let me just scan through the list and double-check.
The two that strike me might be Project 90 and Pyramid, but the rest of, I was just curious, and if, if they don't, could you provide those that do?
Certainly Pyramid and P-90 are serving northern county in the geographical area, but all of our providers in the drug and alcohol arena are serving people from, throughout the county. The way the services work, the issue when matching a client to a service is mostly about their level of need, and less about where they're geographically, where their home base is. Other providers that are active in the, in the northern part of the county, the largest one would be Health Right 360. And Health Right 360 is the organization that subsumed Asian American Recovery Services as well as Women's Recovery Association. And Satikay is very active in South San Francisco.
Okay. I was just, when I saw these, I, I would just want to be sure we weren't missing some, or were some of those coming in future agendas?
Right. We don't have them all organized in this one agenda item, and unfortunately, these are somewhat late due to negotiations with the state regarding the new drug-medical program, so you'll probably still be seeing some others.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any objection. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
I'll move approval of the, set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So the consent calendar has been approved, and now we will go to item number one. Supervisor Horsley.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution. It's a resolution renaming the airfield at Happy Bay Airport in honor of Eddie Andrini, Sr.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, let me tell you a little bit about Eddie Andrini, Sr. He, one of the funniest stories about him is, in 1953, when he learned to fly in the Happy Bay Airport, he was actually a teenager, and he was a little bit too young to actually get a pilot's license. And his parents were immigrants from Italy, and they did not read or write, so he had to get permission from his parents, so when he gave the, his father the permission slip, he just told him it was something that the school required him to get. And that's how he learned how to, or how he got his pilot's license in the first place. Anybody who's familiar with the Coast Side knows Eddie Andrini, and they know his company. He probably built just about everything on the Coast Side. He has a whole bunch of awards from the International Council of Air Shows. That was one of the things he was really famous for. He had a, he has a really remarkable collection of planes in his hangar over at the airport. And one of the awards was called the Sword of Excellence. Another, he was the, the highest honor you can actually receive in, for air shows, the, was the air show, the Hall of Fame. He was really known for somebody who mentored younger pilots. On the Coast Side, one of the things that stands out to me, one of the projects that is most remarkable was really that Cunha Intermediate School soccer field. And anybody who drives on Highway 1, you see that field, really is a remarkable thing. The other thing I knew about Eddie Andrini is that he was a guy that, on a project, when somebody would say, "Oh, no, you can't do that," it's, or not possible, engineering-wise, not possible. It was really, anything that was really complex, they would go to Eddie, and somehow he always figure out how to get it done. He just was a remarkable guy who was able to cut through really complex problems and solve really complex construction problems. In any case, he was also really involved in the Pacific Coast Dream Machine event, which is, draws hundreds of thousands of people on the Coast Side, and it really is important for fundraising for the Coast Side Adult Day Health Center. So I'm here to present the proclamation to Eddie's son and daughter-in-law, Sandy and Eddie as well. So if you come up, I'm going to present this proclamation to, a resolution to you.
(Applause).
Thank you to the board of supervisors, and especially Dawn and Chris Hunter and Gretchen for working with me for the last year and a half. We're just thrilled that you're honoring Eddie this way with the airport, so thank you. Excuse me.
I want to thank those supervisors and the staff, and Gretchen, and from our whole family. We really appreciate it. It means a lot to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Horsley, for taking care, making sure that happened. That's really neat. Go to item number two. Public hearing to consider the adoption of a rev, resolution to vacate a 10-foot sewer easement.
Madam President, members of the board, you have before you a routine vacation of a 10-foot sewer easement that's been requested by the homeowners in unincorporated Burlingame. We recommend your approval, adoption of the resolution.
I'll move approval of that item. Second.
Very good. We need to open the public hearing first.
Oh, my apologies?
No, no, that's okay. I missed it also. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to this item? If not, we'll move to close the public hearing.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pine has made a motion to accept this recommendation, and we had a second to that, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. Item number three is Mr. Porter, who's going to talk about the county's preparation for the 2015-16 war, winter storm season.
Thank you, President Groom, members of the board, Mr. Malpey, and Mr. Byers. It's my pleasure to present this item on storm preparation. We also have some others within the county family in the San Francisco Creek JPA to help with the presentation and talk about the good work that they're doing within their departments. So as you can see, San Mateo County has experienced some pretty significant flooding over the years. There are areas that flood periodically, like in Pescadero, and there's other areas that flood occasionally when we get big El Nino events. And this year has been predicted to be a big El Nino event, and we're hoping it's going to rain. It will rain one of these days. So we'll go through a presentation with various departments. We'll start with Fire Protection Services. We have Assistant Chief Mark Stewart here from Cal Fire, County Fire, to present. We'll have a presentation from the Office of Emergency Services. Director, Lieutenant Paul Kunkel is here to provide that presentation. I will provide the presentations for the remaining county departments. We also have Len Maderman, the executive director from the San Francisco Creek JPA, to make a presentation on his items. So with that, I will turn it over to Assistant Chief Stewart.
For Fire Protection Services, in preparation of our storm events that we're expecting, we have reviewed and made minor changes to our flood plan for Pescadero. It's a three-phase plan that's been used for previous storms. In addition, we conducted refresher training for all of our personnel on swift water rescue. We've purchased additional, we've identified a need and are beginning to purchase additional water rescue equipment for personnel, and we're buying additional equipment with anticipation of upstaffing additional emergency equipment such as utilities and our state fire engines, which aren't typically staffed during winter months. We're upgrading our department, our Department Operations Center at Fire Station 17 in case we do need to open a DOC to improve the communications. We've conducted sandbagging training with our inmate crews. This occurs every year. Ben Loman Camp in Santa Cruz has five inmate crews that are available to us, to the Office of Emergency Services. They receive specialized training in the use of sandbagging, how to apply sandbags, not just make them, but how to use them, in addition to flooding around levees. We've purchased additional water removal equipment for flooding incidents such as trash pumps. We've upgraded the sandbagging around Fire Station 59 in Pescadero in anticipation of flooding. We've developed a utility vehicle that's a support unit using an existing vehicle to carry those trash pumps, some Visqueen, maybe some barriers, and they can be used, this vehicle can be used and staffed up during storm events. It's also a vehicle with a couple people on it that can be used to sit on power lines that are, that are a hazard, so we're not tying up paramedic-level fire engines to sit on static events while we wait PG&E. And also, it can be used to help the road departments do tree, trees that have fallen and help clear that. Also, we've conducted some training with the Coast Side DOC and OES in preparation for large-volume days. We had an exercise a couple months ago on the coast in conjunction with OES in order to test our joint cooperation and working together.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Lieutenant Paul Kunkel with the Office of Emergency Services.
Good morning, board. I'm Paul Kunkel. I'm a lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office, and I'm currently assigned as the director of your Office of Emergency Services. We're here to talk about storms. And people talk about the coming El Nino. El Nino was here. According to NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, we are actually in for a severe El Nino, which means the strip of ocean that they measure in the Pacific, for it to be an El Nino, it has to be 1.5 degrees centigrade higher than normal, and currently, it's over 3 degrees centigrade higher than normal. So we're on pace to have an El Nino similar to the one we experienced in 1997 and 98. So it is here. We just don't know the level of precipitation we'll get as a result of that. Your Office of Emergency Services has done a lot to prepare for flood events. We are trying to get out the word for, with the DPW's and the fantastic job with this as well, for sandbags and other flood-fighting resources prior to the event, and we do that through our sheriff's website and through our mass notification system called Everbridge. During an event like this, as soon as we get information from the National Weather Service that a large storm is coming, we will initiate a conference call with local jurisdictions to discuss strategy. If necessary, we will open our Emergency Operations Center. We gather intelligence from rain and creek gauges, from county gauges, city gauges, and actually ones from NOAA and USGS as well. No one really has a good, complete coverage of the rain gauges, so we're all working together to get as much information as we can on that. We've become somewhat experts in El Nino. We've heard from meteorologists, climatologists, and hydrologists, all from NOAA, and we've used all three of these groups to present to various community groups, so they can be informed as well. We've held meetings, drills, presentations, and training, and we are part of a MAC, a multi-agency coordination system for the San Francisco Creek, and I believe that's going to be spoken to later, so I'm going to skip my part on that. Flood response. The Office of Emergency Services, we are not first responders. A lot of us are law enforcement, but law enforcement, first responders, and fire first, first responders will be the first on scene. Our job is to coordinate, and we have a duty officer... Our job is to coordinate, and we have a duty officer on duty 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. If necessary, we can open up our AOC, and we can call in resources from the state, and if necessary, the federal government as well. We have really adopted a strong unified command structure, and this has been a really important big forward move for us. In the event like there is a flood now, rather than having a fire command post, a police fire command post, and a DPW fire command, or command post, we're all working together. DPW has really led the charge in this. Jim Porter and Joe Lacoco with DPW have done phenomenal work in this. They've attended every one of our meetings, all of our trainings, and they understand the ICS structure. So now, if an event is a law-driven event, we, as the Sheriff's Office, will run it. If it's a fire-driven event, fire will. But if it's a DPW-driven event, DPW will actually run the unified command. And having this all in one place makes things easy. So if I, for some reason, need dump trucks, I don't need to call someone. I look over, and someone from Jim's office is there, and we can arrange that. It makes response much quicker in flood-type events. We've engaged a lot of nonprofit agencies and other agencies within the state and within the county. One of the big wins for us was the California Conservation Corps. We are now contracted with them, and we're, as far as I know, the only other county in Northern California that's contracted with them is Santa Cruz. So in the event that there is a storm disaster, we can put in first assistance from the California Conservation Corps. Typically, that puts you in line. Now, because the county of San Mateo now has a contract with them, we go to the front of the line. And we could use the California Conservation Corps to assist not only county areas and unincorporated areas, but if need be, we can delegate them to a city if the county areas don't need them. That's a huge win for our county, and will get us a large amount of help very quickly in the event of a flood. Some of the other things, Humane Society. We also are working with our Large Animal Rescue, particularly on the coast, because we understand that a large part of our county is rural, and we have to deal with everything we can. Some of the other key agencies we're dealing with, some of the interesting ones, environmental health, hazmat, behavioral health, things people don't think about with flooding. Every time there's a flood, there's generally a hazardous material component to that. There's an environmental component to it. There's also behavioral health one. If you get forced from your home, and suddenly your life is turned upside down, we want to be able, as OES, to provide you with the resources to help get you back on your feet and keep things stable. We're all very familiar with our flood-prone areas. We've worked very hard to conduct meetings, trainings, and exercises in all of these areas. In the event we have to shelter, the San Mateo County College District has been good enough to offer their campuses as shelter locations. This is particularly important right now, because typically, our first stop, or the first stop of Red Cross would be a hotel, but with hotel prices being what they are now, averaging about $200 a night, with Super Bowl coming, they don't have the funds to do that. So if indeed, sheltering becomes an issue, they'll be, people who need to be sheltered will be sheltered at the college district. We also have been preparing for recovery. We've been watching closely what's happening in Lake County, and at the lessons learned after a large disaster, how we can best prepare our county to recover after a large catastrophic event. This is generally the longest phase in any disaster, and hopefully, we won't get to that, but we are preparing for it. And lastly, we've divided up our county into four zones. Traditionally, for years, we had three zones, north, central, and south. We have added the coast as a zone, a Zone Four, because the coast is kind of a different animal. It can be pretty easily isolated, and we want to make sure the coast got the attention that the baside cities got as well. That's all I have for the Office of Emergency Services. Does anyone have any questions? Supervisor Tissia?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I noticed in the list of flood-prone areas, and maybe you're assuming Colma and Broadmoor are one and the same, but I noticed Broadmoor isn't in there, and they have huge flooding, even with the smallest amount of rains.
Yep. Are they not on my list? Oh. I believe that's what, that's, I believe Colma, Broadmoor should be one of the same. That should be on there.
Okay, that's, I just.
And I know Daly City's worked with that, and I know our county DPW has been working very closely with both cities.
And I guess one of the questions I have for you, when you, under the pre-storm flood checklist, it says flood-fighting resources. You talk about sand and sandbags and other resources. One of the questions we talked about a while back, we started talking about the floods from previous years, is can we get sort of early deployment of things like pumps in areas like Broadmoor? It doesn't need to even be an El Nino. They just flood with the smallest of rains practically, but it always seems like we go in after. Is there a way to be prepared? Because they're going to flood, you just know it, and it's, there's, there's a solution, but it's still, right now, you have the Corps of Engineers that they're working with, and it's a $100 million solution. It's not going to happen before this year. It might not happen for several years, so.
I would defer to Mr. Porter for that, just for, because I know they are staging things, I just don't know where.
Through the President. And Broadmoor's an interesting challenge. There's an area in Broadmoor that's a bowl, and the collection system for the storm drain is simply incapable of taking the amount of water that goes there. So Daly City's got a very expensive project to increase capacity downstream, which will help clear that water upstream. But in terms of pumping in Broadmoor, there's really no place to pump it, because what happens is the systems just get overloaded. We actually see water coming out of the storm drain inlets, geysering up, while we have these big storm events, and then an hour and a half, Broadmoor is free of water. It's the strangest thing to watch. When we get to DPW's presentation, we have put together pumping truck that we deploy to flood-prone areas that we can make a difference at, but I'll cover that a little bit later.
So you really can't do anything, sort of be prepared for those floods? You just have to let them run their course?
In Broadmoor in particular, it's really an infrastructure issue, and not necessarily, there's just nowhere to pump the water out there. That is, as I said, it's working its way upstream right now in terms of improvements, but in that one area, and I think about 88th Street and 89th Street in particular, we just simply have no place to pump that water. It literally gets up four and five feet high on those roads. It's pretty amazing.
Well, the thing that concerns me is every single time it happens, it gets into those apartments, their garages. I mean, it's right up to the top of the garages, and it keeps knocking their water heaters out and everything else. It's sort of constant. There's no way to pump it into some of those playgrounds and school fields close by?
Well, part of the issue is the, the system getting between the school playgrounds, which are probably three blocks away from that area, is, it's a long pump. That's probably a good thousand feet, and we'd have to run line across the roadways and shut down the roads in Daly City. It really would be a challenge. We can look into that and work with Daly City on that, but I think the feasibility of pumping out Broadmoor might be pretty tough to tackle. We'll certainly look into that, though.
Yeah, I'd like you to try, I mean, it's been ongoing forever, and I realize that, and it's an expensive fix, and it's going to be a long time coming before they can afford to fix it, but, you know, if we have an El Nino, this could happen week after week after week, or go for week after week. And there's, you know, that's a long time for, you know, the residents. I don't know where they go. I don't even know how they get out of their building half the time. I mean.
The one thing that we could look into is detention systems underneath the street. So we can dig up the street and put in essentially four-foot diameter pipes that will allow the water to, a place to go that's not on the surface, and let that drain out as the storm drain system exhausts itself. I can have our, our engineering division look at that. That's a way to cut off some of the height of the flooding and cut down the peak flow that goes, well, not remove the peak flow, but reduce the amount of flooding that occurs when the peak flow comes down. So that could be.
Yeah, if you could, and just let me know. I've been approached by some of the owners of those apartments. You know, we're still working with Corps of Engineers. It takes a long time, you know, and it's going to be a tough one with them. So I'd just like to try to give them some level of relief if we can.
We'll do our best. I'll have our engineering folks take a look at that.
Thank you.
All right.
And my last point was to, according to NOAA, the heaviest precipitation months are coming. They should be January, February. So we are prepared now, if it happens today, but we will continue to prepare in anticipation of heavy months in January, February.
One quick question for you. On the, on the map here, SFO is in gray, so I'm assuming the city of San Francisco is on point there. But as you know, there's a lot of activity with Colma Creek and San Bruno Creek all in and around the airport. Do we have, have we been communicating with them about kind of that whole joint? That area is, a lot of jurisdictions in and around there.
It is complex. I know the state has been working it as well. I believe they're working together. I know Caltrans is doing their thing. I believe County DPW is doing some stuff, and I know the cities around are. I'm not familiar with what the airport themselves are doing, but everyone is very aware of the problem, and they're very aware of what historically floods, so.
Okay. If you just, yeah, the more, that's going to need some coordination, so more, if, more increase need to be made, or perhaps here on top of that.
And I can look into that, sir.
Okay.
Just, just one quick comment. You may have a lot of slides, too, that's, my experience, a bit like the La Honda, we've had some significant slides, so that may be, it's not really covered in here, but you just, that is one of the potential things when you have lots of rain, especially because our forests have been, so many dead trees, we could end up with some significant issues in La Honda, perhaps even Stanford Week in Acres. And I know we have potential, some progress potentially on Pescadero Creek or Butino Creek, but Pescadero Creek also, there's a berm that has in the past burst and flooded Water Street. That's why I called Water Street, I guess. But in any case, those two, those two creeks are pretty problematic, but I know that there's potentially some action, and we might be able to do this before the El Nino.
Yeah, I know, I think, believe it was last week, we had a NOAA hydrologist actually do a presentation at the Coastside DOC, and the hydrologist, his whole job is water seeping into the soil, how quickly it can go, and he addressed that, and members of people from all over the coast were there, talking about issues like that, and how to deal with them kind of on their own, and how to deal with them with us as well. So it's kind of a good collective effort. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Supervisor Slocum, Jeff.
Yeah, Lieutenant, could I ask you a quick question? I'm just curious, how many folks can be housed up at the College of San Mateo?
I don't know. I know it's in the hundreds. It depends on the type of event, it depends on the type of weather. They have been very good with us, and we've been working with them only, largely because even small fires in apartment complexes now are becoming sheltering events for us before we put you in a hotel. So, so far, I think the most we've done recently is about 20, but I think they can do up to 500 plus.
Okay.
Plus, there's the various campuses, and between them, I'm sure we could get several thousand in.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if this should go to you or Mr. Porter, but just wondering about the advisability of doing community outreach in those flood plane, or flood-prone areas that you showed here, Rotary Clubs, community organizations, neighborhood associations, et cetera.
We have done a lot of that from OES. I don't know if DPW has. I give two El Nino talks probably a week. I know all of our CIR coordinators have been out doing those as well, and with banging the drum of preparation, preparation, and not only prepare yourself, but prepare to evacuate, have a plan of where to go, how to get there, and how to write out things.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have the Parks Department. I'll be presenting on their behalf.
Madam President, real briefly, I think the, the last item was an action item, to accept the report. Are you still on the same item? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're still on the same item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So Parks Department. The Parks Department has been working diligently this summer and fall to get the parks ready for the upcoming storm events. As you know, they have 16,000 acres of parks and a lot of trees, and we've gone through four years of drought, and those trees are stressed. So many of the rangers and their arborists have been out doing quite a bit of tree trimming, but also going out and making sure that access into those parks and out of those parks in particular is maintained and is ready for the inclement weather that is coming. In terms of emergency preparedness, Parks has developed go-bags for all their staff to make sure that in the event of an emergency and they get called in, they have the equipment that they need to be able to work during those events. They've also done quite a bit of work with their heavy equipment, as well as their handheld equipment and their pumping systems, to make sure that everything is ready to go and in good working order. They've been out looking at the trails, and they've been inspecting, and they've been fixing areas where, if there is a lot of water, you will get more erosion and get more damage to those trails and those roads. So they've gone out proactively and repaired those in order for there to be minimal damage if we do get a huge storm event. But they've gone in and done culvert work. They've done quite a bit of, of preliminary prep work for the storms, and it's really, we expect it to pay off substantially. Here's an example of some of the work that they've done, and they've done this with their own crews primarily. They, there's a lot of very skilled craftsmen in Parks, so hats off to the Parks Division on the work they've done. Public Safety Communications is next up. They are, if there's one department in this county that needs to operate, it's Public Safety Communications. They are the dispatchers. They are the people that get police, fire, and public works out to these events. So Public PSC has done quite a bit of work to make sure that they will be operational in storm events. They've made sure that their battery backup systems are in place and working. And UPS, I should have spelled that out, that means uninterrupted power supply. So if the power goes out, these batteries kick on, and all of their circuits that are tied into the dispatch equipment will operate until a generator comes on. That's extremely important, and they've taken that time to make sure that that's all worked. They've worked with our staff to make sure that our generators have been tested and run, and that they're full of fuel and ready to go. They've replaced some of the batteries on their equipment at Fire Station 9 to make sure those are working. Excuse me. And they've made sure that they have enough equipment. What happens with PSC in particular is it's a 24/7 operation. So they not only have to have their equipment operating well, but they have to have water, food, and an area for staff to rest if they get in a 24/7 situation where they'll be dispatching. So PSA has gone a long way to make sure that that works well. They've also gone and done the same thing with their radio systems, to make sure that the radio systems are operating well, both within their realm, the Public Safety Communications folks, as well as with our public safety staff, to make sure that their equipment is functioning and communicating properly with their systems. And they also have storm mode operations in place and ready to go. Next up, I'd like to introduce Len Maderman. Len is the Executive Director of the San Francisco Creek JPA, which the county is a member. San Francisco Creek is the southern border, and when that floods, East Palo Alto and Menlo Park in our county are certainly affected. So I'll turn it over to Len.
Thank you, Jim. Good to see all of you again. So, let's, as I said, as Jim said, I'm Len Maderman, and I am the Executive Director of the San Francisco Creek JPA. The JPA was formed following the flood of 1998. The image on the bottom right is from Palo Alto home in 1998. The image on the upper left is a flood-prone bridge called the Pope Chaucer Bridge, which separates Menlo Park from Palo Alto. So just briefly, the San Francisco Creek JPA thinks about flooding on both sides of the creek, which is both San Mateo and Santa Clara County areas. We have about, this image shows on the left from North Fair Oaks approximately to Mountain View. And so we worry about all of these different floodplains. We have about 8,400 properties in the 100-year floodplain, and that's both a title and creek floodplain, and about 40% of those properties are in San Mateo County side. We're doing projects along the bay. That's the lines in yellow along the creek, the circles, X's and lines. And, and over the past five years, including a project that Caltrans is constructing right now at Highway 101, there's, we've put together about $80 million in funding towards these various projects. We're also waiting to go on a project, those two lines closest to the bay, between Highway 101 and the bay, we're waiting to go on a project, awaiting permits, and we expect to construct on that in 2016. So for today, I'll talk, in the next five minutes, about these five items, removing debris in the creek, raising the creek banks, providing earlier and clearer flood warning, improving coordination among emergency responders, and communicating with the public. And this is all work in order to reduce flood risk for the, for the El Nino season. In terms of removing debris, the JPA coordinates annual activity by the agencies that are listed in the box on the bottom right, including San Mateo County. And in 2015, you don't have a reference point between this and other years, but this is, we did many times the amount of work compared to previous years, in part because of what's been described previously. There were several very large dead trees that we were concerned would fall into the creek, or already had fallen into the creek, that then would get stuck at a bridge, one of the several bridges that we have in the floodplain. So thanks to San Mateo County Public Works and, and the other agencies that are listed there for their assistance. In terms of reducing flood risk by raising creek banks in areas that previously flooded, the city of East Palo Alto did a project in 2013 on the, in an area that flooded in December of 2012. They raised the creek bank by 18 to 24 inches, over about a 600-foot period of the levee. And in August of this year, both Palo Alto and Menlo Park, you see the red, small red lines, and I'll show you what that looks like in a second, both Palo Alto and Menlo Park repaired a degraded berm upstream of the Pope Chaucer Bridge. And East Palo Alto in November of this year, last month, did work along And East Palo Alto in November of this year, last month, did work along Woodland Avenue between University Avenue and Manhattan. It's across from the complex that includes the Four Seasons Hotel and it flooded in December of 2012 at that location. East Palo Alto, right now, is doing additional work to extend what they did on top of the levee downstream of Highway 101. In fact, I was there yesterday. It's a, it's an interesting project they have, basically, it's called a sand burrito. And what they're doing is they're putting a liner down on top of the levee, they're filling it with sand, they're wrapping the liner around it and then casing that in concrete and adding 18, again, 18 to 24 inches, and they're adding another about 600 feet. Palo Alto is using the same contractor to do similar treatment on the other side to provide equal and greater protection in that area. Again, that's an area that flooded previously and we have great concerns there about the integrity of the levee because in December 2012, it not only overtopped, but water seeped through the levee. And, and so that's why we want to get going on that project as soon as possible. In terms of what this looks like, on the upper left is the temporary flood wall that East Palo Alto put in along Woodland Avenue. It's, it's not as high as those posts, it's as high as, as those boards, as about two feet or so. On the upper right, that was on the upper left, on the upper right is workers in 2013 putting in that raising of the levee downstream of Highway 101. And then on the bottom, you see in the Menlo Park side, the filling of that degraded berm where there was a gap between a flood wall and, and the berm and then it was filled in in November of this year. Improving flood warning, this is something that we've been working on for years. President Groom may remember this from her tenure on the board a long time ago and, and we're glad that it's kind of finally in place. In the black, what you see is what we've had since 2000 and the communities have had the ability to benefit from data that comes in about rainfall and, and flow and water depth in the creek. And what you see in blue is what we've added in the last couple of years. And that includes stream gauges on Stanford University property that's owned and managed by the campus and that provides about an hour and 45 minutes of warning to the flood prone area. And new rain gauges, including two rain gauges at County, San Mateo County Parks, Hudert Park and Wonderlic. And additionally, rain gauges at Windy Hill, which is a Mid Penn property, and then a Palo Alto park called Foot Hills. And so what we have now is a much better broad representation of the upper watershed. The purple line here is the watershed and that's about 45 square miles. And so we're trying to capture everything that's going on in there and give people advanced warning. So we built this new website, it's, the URL is sfcjpa.org/floodwarning. And it gives people through the website, also through email and text alerts, information about two hours, almost two hours ahead of when we expect flood watch and flood warning. This is what it looks like 99% of the time when there's no water or very little water in the creek and it's not a concern. When it is a concern, it looks like this. And this would show not just where we think it will overtop, which is the red circles, but also where we have flood watch, which is the yellow circle, in this case, that's Middlefield Road Bridge. And this is a hypothetical situation, we hope. And it also not just shows where we think it will overtop, but it will show on this Google map where we expect water to go when it does overtop. So people can put in an address they might be concerned about live during an event and see if it's an area that they should be concerned about. Of course, this is based on modeling and topography and each storm is different, so we have this caveat of this is kind of what, what our best information tells us. We have significantly increased the number of sandbag stations and number of sandbags on both sides of the creek, in Palo Alto side and San Mateo County side. And these are sandbag stations run by the, by the three cities, as well as the Santa Clara Valley Water District. And then finally, on public outreach, we've sent out mailings in English and Spanish to 8,800 property owners. If you remember, we have 8,400 properties in the 100-year flood plain, 8,800 property owners and as well as 4,000 renters. There's a significant renting community in all three cities, especially on the East Palo Alto side in the flood prone area. And we've done community meetings. And in fact, I'll say that we have a community meeting in East Palo Alto coming up this Thursday night in City Hall at the City Council Chambers at 6:30. And it's being led by the city and the JPA. And we have a community meeting in Menlo Park the week from Thursday, meaning December 17, at 7:00 PM at City Council Chambers. And I think that concludes my discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maderman.
And finally, we'll talk about the Department of Public Works and the San Mateo County Flood Control District, which we manage. So this winter, we've taken some pretty substantial steps to make sure that our channels within the flood control district are clear. Just as a refresher, the county operates three subzones as part of our flood control district. One is in Colma Creek, which drains obviously Colma, Daly City, South City, a portion of San Bruno and Pacifica, a very small part of Pacifica. And the second area is San Bruno, that's another subzone. We have a channel that runs just west of San Francisco International Airport that we're responsible for. Our third area is San Francisco Guido Creek. We're a partner in the JPA and we've essentially provide the JPA with some funding to help their operations, to do the good work that they do on that creek with the other agencies. So in Colma Creek, we've done quite a bit of obstruction removal, be it fallen trees, we see a lot of trash in there, shopping carts and the like. That all has been removed this summer. At San Bruno Creek, we've gone in and we have changed our pump controls to make sure that they don't overheat this winter. We went with a variable frequency drive system that just allows the pumps to change the speed that they're pumping when the, when the storms come and it allows them to operate more efficiently. In San Bruno Channel, we've done quite a bit of cleaning in conjunction with San Francisco International Airport staff. This sediment basin is just east of the Bart Trax in San Bruno. That was actually cleaned by SFO staff this summer. So the intent there is when the water comes down, there's an area for the sediment to drop out so that it doesn't clog our channel further downstream. We've also done quite a bit of vegetation control. You can see before and after pictures of the east-west segment near Cupid Row. That is an area in very eastern San Bruno that will flood if this channel is not operating to its capacity. I'd like to note that the channel capacity on San Bruno Creek is basically for what's called a 4% event or a 25-year storm. This system was designed for that event and that's what we maintain it to. You hear a lot about 100-year event because that's where FEMA ties their flood insurance maps to. This is designed for one quarter of that event, just so that you know, if we get a big rain, we could run into some trouble down in San Bruno. Again, some more vegetation clearing. This is in the north-south segment that leads from the San Bruno area out towards the 101-380 interchange. At that point, it goes in a box culvert, heads out towards the bay just north of SFO. The next few slides are DPW. We've done quite a bit of work within the department to take proactive measures to make sure that we can protect the unincorporated areas. We went out with our staff and made 40,000 sandbags. These are filled sandbags that have been made. And we've stationed these sandbags at our four, four of our corp yards in the county. We have them at Grant Yard, we've got them in La Honda, we've got them in Pescadero and we've got them in Princeton. So those sandbags are available for the public. We also have literally tens of thousands of empty bags and sand. So we've set up sandbag making stations at our corp yards as well. What tends to happen is we put out a pallet of about 500 to 1,000 sandbags and they're gone overnight. So we've allowed folks to set up stations so that if they need additional sandbags, they can make it up themselves. We've also cleared out the Pescadero Quarry. There was a comment earlier about being prepared for mudslides and the sliding that tends to occur on the coast side. What we do is when we have roads closed and we have tree debris, it all goes up to the Pescadero Quarry. In 1998, that quarry was literally fully stocked with mud and trees. So it's very important to us to keep that Pescadero Quarry clear so that we've got places to put this debris. So that has been done. We've done some work on the Belmont Channel. We have about 200 feet of this channel along Old County Road near Harbor. It's important that this stays open because if it doesn't, water backs up, it goes underneath the Harbor Boulevard over crossing and floods that, that under crossing for the railroad tracks. And you'll tend to get people, although they see the water, they'll drive into it. So we try to make sure that that doesn't happen. Again, that channel is not sized to take a lot of the flood waters from that watershed. So if we get a pretty big event, we could see some flooding in Belmont. We have worked with the cities of Belmont and San Carlos to look at what a project would look like to upsize that channel. There is a conceptual design. We're going to continue working with those agencies to try to implement that project. Internally, we've done quite a bit of culvert repair and slope restorations within the unincorporated areas. This is an example out on Tenetis Creek, out on the coast side. This is some of the work that we've done with our staff, replacing a culvert and allowing it, the water to get down the slope without eroding it, it'll go down through the pipe. This is out on the midcoast. We've done quite a bit of culvert replacements in that area. We've done eight of them out there, this is just an example of one. We've also prepared a new vehicle this year. We call it our mobile Ready Truck. And basically, it's got hoses and trash pumps in it. This resulted from our, our learning curve from the Belmont Trailer Park flooding that occurred about a year and a half ago. It took us about an hour to respond to that because we had to go to Grant Yard, get the pumps on the truck and the hoses and get out there. Now we've got a truck made up, ready to go. So once we get that call, we just get in this truck and we go out there and we start pumping and trying to relieve the flooding. We've also done some pump reconstructions. This is the Athlon Terrace Pump Station. This drains most of North Fair Oaks. We've rebuilt that pump system at Athlon Terrace to be able to make sure that those pumps are operating during storm events. Although I don't have a slide for this, on Athlon Terrace, where the water comes before it gets to the pump station, we've also, are actually at this minute, are doing work out there to install permeable concrete along the lip of gutter, along with a detention system in the street. And the idea is to be able to capture some of that water underground before it overwhelms the homes on Athlon Terrace. That work is occurring as we speak and should be done within the next two weeks barring inclement weather. And then, of course, during our normal routine maintenance, we go and we clear all the storm drain inlets and make sure that there's no leaves or other debris in those inlets so that we get free flow of water in there. Finally, public messaging. We have on our website advice and suggestions for folks as to what to do before a storm in preparation. We also have our, our sandbag locations on there. And we're working with the Communications Director to come up with a county flood preparedness website that will tap the work that DPW does as well as OES and all of our departments to have one place for residents of the county to be able to find everything that the county has to offer in terms of storm preparedness and readiness. And that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment Director Porter and Mr. Lococo and Mike Callagie for their work on Athlon Way, which you just went through. Athlon Way is in North Fair Oaks. And I think it's one of the better examples of county responding to community needs. Just briefly, want to share the story with you. A group of folks from the neighborhood came here to the Hall of Justice and we met with them. They had pictures of flooding in their living rooms, garages, front yards. One woman actually had a picture of a fish in her living room from the flood. And this goes on when, every year, basically, when there are significant rains. And Mr. Callagie took it upon himself to meet with them, this group of neighbors, many, many times, and Mr. Porter did as well. Everybody put their heads together and came to these positive solutions for that street, for those residents. And it's not going to solve the El Nino problem if it's 100-year high and King Tides and all that sort of thing. But it's a really great example of the county working with the neighborhood to solve a problem that's been going on for years and years. So thank you to Mr. Porter and Mr. Lococo and Callagie and the rest of the team. I know we've gotten a lot of emails from those folks and they're just so appreciative and recognize your great work.
I just think, I also want to thank all the presenters. I mean, this is really important, important work. We'll see what January and February brings, but you know, we have to, you know, take every step we can to be ready. Just also a comment, you know, it's very impressive to look at the, the warning system and the gauge system that Mr. Maderman has installed. And Supervisor Slocum and I have, you know, started to kind of ask questions or inquire about whether we could do some of those things on our other, some of our other creeks.
Well, Chief Stewart and Lieutenant Conkle and Mr. Maderman and Mr. Porter, thank you very much. And you, you said that there, a website is on its way. That will be great news. And is this presentation on the website now?
It is not, but we can get it up.
I think that might be a good idea.
Could I just take a moment and ask Mr. Porter the same question about the community outreach and neighborhood associations? There are a number of those in South County, Rotary Clubs, community organizations, and wondering if DPW has been out to share that presentation with those folks.
Through the President, we have not been out to share this presentation. We'd be happy to do that to service groups or whoever would like to see it. We have been communicating quite a bit with the public. People that are in flood prone areas know they're in flood prone areas and they call us. So although we haven't done formal meetings, there's been quite a bit of individual outreach. But I would be happy to, to take this on the road and go visit any group that would like to have us.
That's great. Anything, okay. Thank you again, gentlemen. It's really, really a good presentation. So now we will go to item, oh no, we need to, we need to accept this report.
All move to accept the report?
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Now we'll go to item number four, which is probably Mr. Porter again. The governing board of the, we are going to act as the governing board of the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District, conduct a public hearing.
Thank you, President Groom, members of the board. You caught me off guard.
Hard to do.
We're, thank you very much. We are before you today to recommend annexation of a parcel in the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District. This is the lands of Rubio. This parcel is in need of sewer service. We have received all of the necessary approvals in order to make this annexation. All fees have either been paid or will be paid as part of the annexation and we recommend your approval in annexing this parcel into our sewer maintenance district. And that concludes my report.
All right. Do we have a motion to?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that passes. Thank you very much. Item number five was postponed. The county manager's report is in your packet.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
And with that, we'll go to Board of Supervisors' reports. Supervisor Horstman, you want to start?
Yeah, I guess I do. This is a kind of a tragic case. Actually, Supervisor Pine pointed out to me, and I think he sent a message saying, if people drive too fast and are careless and, in case, there was a 17-year-old pedestrian killed when he was hit by an SUV in Pacifica as he walked home from school on Monday. His name is Joshua Delacruz Solis. He was hit in a crosswalk on State Highway 35, Skyline, basically, near the intersection with Glenn Court Way at 3:25 PM. And it was a SUV driver making the left turn off the Skyline from King Drive and didn't see Solis. And again, you know, one of the things that I've noticed on all the freeways and state highways that they're signed about, slow down, save a life. And, you know, I think Supervisor Pine pointed out to me is that people are not as conscious as they should be. They, if you notice that people on the road drive faster, I know the traffic's gotten worse. People need to pay more attention and this young man lost his life. You know, there's no, nothing, there was a person at the scene, it was not a hit and run, it was under the influence, but clearly, there's no such thing really as an accident. It really is something that's not, people are not paying enough attention. And unfortunately, this young man lost his life. No other reports.
Yes, I have several adjourned memories. The first one is for Barbara Ann Boccalupi. She was 71 years old when she passed away due to complications of a stroke. She leaves behind her husband George and her sons Paul and Tony. She graduated from Mercy High School in San Francisco, attending City College, and entered the banking business shortly thereafter and retired from Cal. the banking business shortly thereafter, and retired from Cal Fed after 25 years of service. She was also a member of our Dolger Senior Center in Daly City, and our sympathy goes out to her family. The second one is John Shabunka. He passed away on November 30th with his family by his side. It was due to complications from a fall. He spent most of his life in and around the city he loved, which was San Francisco. He graduated from Poly High in 1943. He entered the service in the spring of 1944, and later, when he got back from the war, he joined PG&E in 1951 and retired after 33 years with the company. He leaves behind his four children, Lynn, Stephen, who passed away already, and Kathy and Christine, and his grandsons Sean and Beau Cattigan. He was, most people were well aware that his forever career was joke-telling, and that he was a master at that. After his retirement, he and his wife had wandered the US in their RV. He loved to fish, read, garden, and also anything trains. Our sympathy goes out to the Shabunka family. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Frank Panacci. He passed away on November 25th. He was a first-generation Italian-American. He was born in North Beach. He was a lifelong resident also of the city. He was preceded in death by his wife Donna. He leaves behind his five children, Diane, Carol, Mary, Joan, Scott, and Frank, and 14 grandchildren, 13 great-grandchildren. He, too, served in World War II, and when he returned, he joined the San Francisco Police Department and served for 25 years. He was, received many awards and citations for his bravery and marksmanship, as well as for his outstanding work with many movie production companies, including Bullitt and The Streets of San Francisco. Our sympathy goes out to his family. Also, Jack Grealish, a true San Franciscan. We all started out in San Francisco, worked our way down the peninsula. He also passed away on Monday, November 30th, after a wonderful week of celebrating his birthday, Thanksgiving, and 65 years of marriage to his wife, Pat. So he spent the entire week with his children and wife. He was 89 years old. He leaves behind his children Marty, Steve, Noni, Bob, John, and Joe, and 16 grandchildren. He was a native San Franciscan, a son of Irish immigrants. He moved, he grew up in Eureka Valley and attended Most Holy Redeemer Grammar School, Sacred Heart, and St. Ignatius High School. He was noted as the only St. Ignatius athlete to play four varsity sports. He later attended St. Mary's College, where he played football and basketball. He also did a lot of work when he was in the service of being competitive athletically as well, and he, he was quoted, "I was very fortunate, the only shot I heard was a starter's gun at the track meets." Our sympathy goes out to his family as well. And Mary King, who was a lifelong Oakland resident and former Alameda County Supervisor, she sought to improve community life and become a transportation expert. She passed away at the age of 69. She was Alameda County's first black female supervisor when she was elected in 1988, and was re-elected twice. She was also an AC Transit District Administrator and a former president of ABAG. Her skills were tested in 1989, when she was Chairwoman of the Bay Bridge Design Task Force. Our sympathies go out to her family, and she will be sorely missed. She was quite a lady. And then just two, on a happier note, two more of the older driver safety seminars, called Age Well, Drive Smart. The first one will be on Thursday, January 28th, from 9:00 to 12:00, at the Veterans' Memorial Senior Center in Redwood City. And the next one will be on Wednesday, February 23rd, from 9:00 to 12:30, at the Senior Coast Siders in Half Moon Bay. So feel free to join us, and if any of you would like to come and check it out in your districts, feel free.
I have a couple of adjourned memories. The first is for Jack Cahoon, who was a physician, graduated from the University of Chicago Medical School, and practiced in San Mateo for a very long time. He had a myriad of hobbies. For me, his great claim to fame was he was married to Ruth Cahoon, who was a very dedicated, longtime League of Women Voters officer and supporter. And Jack was a great, great supporter for Ruth and all of her activities. And next is Carol Mickelson Way. She, too, is a longtime San Mateo resident, has been very active. She was a San Mateo Grand Jury Member. She was president of the American Association of University Women, president of the Assistant League, League of Women Voters, director of the San Mateo Community College Foundation, San Mateo County Emergency Medical Care Committee, and she passed away just recently, and there will be a memorial service for her in January. And then I wanted to make a comment about a very tragic case that happened in San Mateo recently. A young woman was stabbed in a domestic violence accident, and her name was Colleen Straw, and I want us to adjourn in her memory. And since we just recently saluted Domestic Violence Month last, a couple of months ago, it just, it never, it seems to be very close to us at all times, and I think we just need to pay so much more attention to people who are troubled and see if we can't get them help. And with that, we're going to adjourn to closed session.